Buy in the building.
Okay, well, it's now seven o'clock, so we can call this meeting to order, get back online. And Chris, Councilor Chris Amber is joining us via video. And other than that, we're all here. So first item up is the adoption of the agenda. Anything emergent to add?
No, sir.
Okay, Chris moved adoption. All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And then accounts payable, could I have somebody move them for information? Larry, and did anybody ask you any questions, Phyllis?
Yes, sir, I have quite a few.
There you go.
EFT three nine four five, the touch coupler for thirty thousand dollars. That's the water meter radios that we put on the houses that send the meter reads back.
Okay, so that's more than one?
Yes. Yeah. EFT three nine three two, Afron, the seniors water line. So there's multiple charges on that invoice, but it was for new plumbing and water lines for the kitchen. And Chris did confirm for me today that Afron does have plumbers on staff.
Afron?
Yeah. And they ran full new plumbing for what the seniors wanted to keep and the new stuff that has to go. Home hardware, EFT three nine three nine for five thousand dollars, eight hundred and thirty-two gallons of seasonal RV antifreeze. And we've had a discussion, and that will be ordered through RMA next year, so we can get a better deal on that. Check eight five six seven zero was for dumpster lids, and they purchased a hundred and ninety new lids. Check eight five six seven six, that is for the new countertop and installation labor at the senior center. EFT three nine one seven is for railway repairs, and that's fifty percent town, fifty percent in the rail company. And then we had two on landfill, checks number seven nine five and eight oh three. And those are the loan payments back to the town and to Cypress County. And those were the questions I received, sir. We'll be happy to answer if there's any further.
Okay.
I have a comment on one of them.
Okay, Jim?
Those dumpster lids, about a month ago, there was an invoice for a whole slug of dumpster lids. Why are we buying them twice?
So the first tranche was used up, and the second tranche is used to repair the remaining number of lids that were counted by Public Works. And so now we're just applying labor to do those installations.
So what you're saying is the first time we didn't order enough?
Yes.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any AP questions? Kathy?
How many loan payments do we have left from the landfill to the town and the county?
The loan was from twenty nineteen to the end of twenty twenty-nine, so ten years.
So that's the new loan then, not the...
That was the million dollars each for the landfill selling operation.
So another nine years. Pete? Any other questions?
Just have one.
Okay. Go ahead.
EFT three nine three seven, the CDB Transit Services, is that that handy bus we were talking about?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah, that is.
Yeah. That's all I have.
Okay, then if there's no more questions, all in favor, receiving for information? Opposed, that is carried. And moving on to the cash and investment summary.
Receive for information.
James? Does anybody have any questions or concerns about that?
Go ahead, Larry, if you've got something.
I was just wondering how come the bank charges got so much?
I would anticipate that would be for credit card payments, but Mike, do you know more details?
That other withdrawals and service charges, is that the one you're talking about? The nine eighteen?
Which one are you looking at, Larry?
Go back, we just stopped.
It would be... Bank charges.
Other withdrawals and service charges, that one, the nine eighteen and the two sixty-six? Because there's two things listed in there.
Yeah. So there are some service charges that the bank charges for the online payment systems that we use.
Go up some more. Go back, go to the front. Go it way into the budget minimum. Still in the budget. Keep going. No. Now you're getting close. Stop, go down. Right there, right there. Service charges, nine eighteen twenty-three, up at the top of your page, and the two sixty-six. Those are about the only service charges that are mentioned.
And I wasn't listening, sorry. What did you say?
They were just the standard fees that we get charged. Each bank charges a certain amount every month to take in our online payments.
That didn't make it better.
Didn't make it better.
No.
Just explain what they were.
All right. Any other questions or concerns about the cash and investment summary? If not, all in favor for information? Opposed, that is carried. And budget report to September one, so three quarters of the way through the year. Phyllis?
Sir, we need to make a correction, that is to September thirtieth, not September one.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that's why I said three quarters of the year. Anyway. Is that just in the agenda? Yeah, it doesn't really have the dates in the actual budget, so it was just an agenda print, I think. Okay, somebody want to move that for information, please? Kathy? Okay, any questions or concerns? None? Okay. All in favor of receiving for information? Opposed, that is carried. And moving on to minutes of the council meeting held October twelfth, twenty twenty-one for adoption.
I'll move.
Jim? Does anybody have any questions or concerns, noted as any spelling errors, anything like that? Short. Okay, seeing nothing, all in favor of receiving for adoption? Opposed, that is carried. And then the municipal planning commission for adoption, Larry? Any questions, concerns arising? There will be discussion later on some of this stuff. Seeing none, all in favor for information? Opposed, that is carried. And then moving on to requests for decisions. We have the twenty twenty-one AUMA convention meeting with the Minister of Transportation, request for decision.
Well, there is none, because they denied it later on.
No, that's the other guy. This is Minister of Transportation, the other was the Minister of Municipal Affairs.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Chris?
We could maybe lobby for that red light camera we talked about a couple of years ago? If we really wanted to still push that topic?
What topic is that?
The red light camera.
I don't know.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Remember how we passed in the budget, red light camera on the highway? And then he determined, or the transportation minister at the time determined, that it wasn't a safety issue? We have the money put aside in the budget in reserves now.
Okay, I think I recall that. I don't know if it's in... Anyway, we should have a motion before we talk about anything.
Yeah, that's...
Sorry, oh, we did.
We need a motion before we can discuss it.
So you're making a motion that we put it on the floor for discussion?
Yes.
Okay, Kathy did that? Okay, so Chris had a red light camera. Rethink. Kathy?
I was thinking, isn't transportation the... Isn't that same portfolio we have to talk to about wastewater and drinking water? I know we dealt with transportation to get the water treatment plant.
Well, I think Alberta Environment is in charge of a lot of that stuff, but I believe the Ministry of Transportation is the portfolio that handles all the money for some reason.
Yeah.
They're the ones that have the bank account. So eventually, everything goes to them, and they look after all the great big projects. So...
So did we want to...
So I don't know what, as far as meeting with them goes, I don't know what they look at. I don't think... I think that everybody would still be looking after their respective portfolios and then moving it along to them for money.
Because the only other thing I can think of, I think we have to get permission from transportation to attach Ninth Avenue to the old highway. I think that's transportation. Did we want to open that discussion with them about what kind of timelines and stuff we would be looking at? And if they would give us any money to attach A to B?
Well, this is just an idea thing, like I'm...
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jim.
Can we talk to them about the length of time that it takes to get the train crossing cleared?
That CP rail.
Like...
That's done to that?
No, 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 but the government has some say as to how many cars they put on to it. Like today, when the train came from Medicine Hat, I'll bet I was waiting for fifteen minutes for the track to clear that I could drive through.
That CP rail, it's part of their act.
Yeah, they can...
They can do whatever they want.
And that's a thing that they could be under a slow order or something like that, where they can only go ten miles an hour.
Then they should split the train.
I got into a fight one time with them when there... The... There was a derailment, and they blocked off an entire subdivision of Coleman. And I tried to get them to break the plane, break the train for emergency vehicles, and they wouldn't do it. They told me to bug off.
Phyllis, you had your hand up.
I believe they can only block the tracks for twenty minutes. They have to clear within twenty minutes.
What the rule is, is if a train goes, stops, blocks a crossing, they have five minutes to take some sort of action after the first car arrives at that crossing. So whether that's the train stops, so that means that the conductor getting off the head end of the train and start walking back after five minutes. So it's still going to take the conductor, let's say, fifteen minutes to walk back to that crossing to go to cut the train. So that's, and that's just, that's the rule with CP.
Well, I do know that they did start running longer trains. They keep adding trains. And right now, they do block eight. They literally just park there on the dual tracks, right? Because they didn't want to add more siding, so with their extra length, they literally... And they sit there for twenty minutes is nothing when they start blocking. They're not doing it on Mitchell and Broadway, because it's only single track, but up there, that's totally blocked. And I know that they always tell us that they were here first, and according to them, they can take the crossing out.
And that's why you see them sitting at that Broadway crossing, because they don't want to block. They try and not block that crossing as much as they can. And I know this because I've worked with these guys.
Yeah, no, I know you have some history there, so...
So, and, but, yeah, that's the rule that we were given anyways, so...
I don't know how much pull you have with those, because they do claim they were here first. They can make you go around.
Okay.
But I think what we're looking at is, do we have something coming up that we need to talk to these people about, other than just to have a conversation? Like, I honestly think if we're going to make an appointment to see these people, it should be something that we are thinking of, and we are in the process of planning. Not just, "It's great to see you," because we can do that on the street.
Yeah, or when they have their...
We did try two things with the minister, and like I say, that's later on in the package. And obviously, our two things weren't a priority, and we didn't... And we didn't get it. I do like Kathy's idea. Yeah, and I don't even know, honestly, anymore, I don't think that's a numbered highway. Like, that's the old Trans-Canada Highway, it is now Samus Drive. I believe that's between us and the city, and...
Yeah.
I think it's our road.
I don't know if it's...
We grade it and mow it and everything else, it's ours.
From the town limits in, it's ours.
Yeah, and it's Medicine Hats, they did that wonderful overlay that Mater thought it was rough.
Yeah, well, if that's the case, then we don't need to get...
No, we don't need them for that.
We don't need their permission to attach the two roads then.
Nope, no, that is, like, they own the other road, but they...
Or is that a secondary?
That's now a town road. It's not even a numbered road.
It's a secondary highway?
I don't think it's numbered.
Yeah.
I think it's ours. We grade it, snow clear it, mow it, have our sewer going down the ditch. Like, I think it's ours. And we're going to alter it. In our east side plan, we show it a different line... Alignment, I think, is what that's called, right, Chris? Yeah. Anyway, so I think that's our road, so we don't need to see them for that.
I think we should just pass on it. I don't think we have anything to bring up.
Other than those, the water, which we're not ready to go with yet. I can't think of anything other than...
Okay, well, I think that's what it was here for, is just, do we have any ideas? Okay. Well, then Kathy's motion was that we discussed it. I think we did that then.
We discussed the heck out of it.
So do you want a motion that we just leave it, or just?
End it.
End it?
Discuss and accept for information.
Okay. Discuss and information. All right, any questions or concerns about that? All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Recycling drop-off, request for decision.
We'll make motion number one.
What is motion number one?
That we move it... Move administration to issue a request for proposals for lease space for a recycling drop-off site with the following conditions: ten-year lease agreements, supply of loose garbage control, yard maintenance, supply of snow removal, dust control. They must obviously have some of it.
All right. Any discussion on that? James?
Well, I just had a couple of questions if we were to go that route. First off, would it affect the grant money that the town currently has in place for that? Because I believe I heard that was only good to the end of the year.
The grant money for that is MSI, if there is grant money for the recycling. And if this is the route, council chooses, we would just cancel the grant application. That money would be returned for further allocation on different projects.
Second question then, would there be cost implications with pulling the contract you currently have with transit paving?
I think we do enough work with transit that they're willing to work with us.
Okay. And then last question, as part of your RFP, would it be, or would other locations be open suggestion, or is it just for this specific location?
We would be asking the proponents to provide the location.
Larry, would it meet all the development requirements like we would have to do? Like, you'd almost have to take a development permit out for that?
They would have to take a development permit, and that would be one of the clauses in the agreement, was that they have to be able to get a development permit and meet all the conditions of the land use bylaw.
And so the pavement going in and out, so it doesn't affect our roads, would be... Would have to be met?
Yep.
Does anybody else have anything? No? I do. So... In regards to this proposal, I mean, when I look at it, it is off a road. Like, so we have to access it via laneway or almost private property to get to this spot, I think, if I'm thinking of the right spot from this proposal. We already have a contract in place to put it on our land. So I guess the question I have is, why would we want somebody up, to pay somebody else operational costs to do something that we can do in-house ourselves? That... I tried to think of what a pro would be for somebody else to have this site. So I guess it would be, we would therefore be able to have that corner piece for some other use or for some sale in the future. If we went to some other alternative recycling and no longer needed the land for that, we would just cancel an existing lease. I just don't see the benefits to having a private person lease us land to put recycle bins on.
I agree with you.
Then why did you make that motion?
Because it's a positive motion.
Well, you could have positively made motion number two.
And also, we were paid leasing, and we've got lads sitting there doing nothing.
Well, I'm glad you think so too. All right. Okay, well, let's... I was waiting for somebody to say something, and nobody was.
So the only reason that I could see that this would be beneficial is, are we looking at total cost being significantly less than what the town is currently in contract for?
I have no idea, because we haven't seen any lease numbers. We would then be putting this out to have somebody lease us land over ten years, and would that be cheaper than just building our own? Like, I struggle, but...
I would like to see the numbers before I decide one way or the other. That's why I think we get the RFP, we look at it, and then we know for sure. It's a good deal or it's a bad deal. If it's a bad deal, we go back to Plan A.
Okay, Chris?
If we still went ahead with the current location at seven oh two South Railway Drive, I know construction has been halted there, can we still get it open for this fall?
If a decision was made today, yes.
Right.
If a decision is delayed for two to four weeks, probably not.
Okay.
Because the weather, just, it's weather dependent.
So we're probably looking at spring no matter what?
Unless we just stay the course.
Correct.
Still warm.
But how can we truly make a decision without a lease rate? Is it a dollar a year? Is it forty thousand dollars a year?
Your worship. So we do have a lease rate, but in order to be fair and transparent, we need to go to tender.
Right. And I guess, since we're all duly elected, we can throw caution in the wind. In my opinion, is we carry on with what we were doing. Like, what is the worst that this could cause? I just don't see somebody else fencing and maintaining a lot for us for cheaper than we can do it ourselves. I just don't see it. And lighting it, and all the wonderful things. I mean, they may have a gravel lot right now, but that's not... Like I say, the access to it is not off of a road, and there isn't two accesses to it. Just my thinking.
Another thing is, we don't even know if they'd be able to handle all the bins that we want. And we're going to be putting in the composting bin, and, you know, if that goes, we've got lots of room in our lot. And our lot's been designed for this.
If we went and closed, could we hear the proposed lease rate?
No, sir.
We would still have to tender it to be transparent.
Fair.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything to say before I call the question? All in favor of Larry's motion?
Can you read the motion, make it clear?
It's option one.
Option one, to go with the new location, okay?
To, no, not to go with the new location, to actually put out an RFP to see how many private people want to lease us some land to put up a recycling station on and maintain it, and da-da-da-da-da, that. So that's the motion. So once again, all in favor? Opposed? It is defeated.
Let's get her done.
Well, that's option two.
Yes, let's get it done, Kathy. Good call.
Is that what you're saying?
That's my motion, let's get her done.
Kathy?
Good motion, Kathy.
That was called Hidalgo, right?
I thought it was Larry, the cable guy that said that.
Well, he, yes.
Let's put the bed now, once and for all.
Yeah.
No, it hasn't. We haven't voted on it yet. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say? No. All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. It's almost in bed now. Well, I'm waiting for something else. Okay, C, establish dates for review of the twenty twenty-two budget.
I move for option number one.
Is that four days in a row?
Just about.
I like how many options they gave us. Normally, for the new people, on a normal year, we would have a larger timeframe, but because of the election, we would normally be probably looking at our capital budget already, but everything is pushed because of the election. So in the efforts of getting an interim budget in place for December, I can see why they're doing this. So who made that motion? I didn't write it down. James? Any questions or concerns? Is everybody going to be here? All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Okay, and then item D, food trucks. We get to watch the Bellagio fountains. Because Chris is...
Nothing right now.
It's too dark anymore.
Yeah, well, they turn on the lights when they do that.
Lights?
Okay. We need a motion to start the conversation.
Can you put that up a little higher?
Go ahead, Larry.
I move we just leave the food trucks the way they are.
I would agree with Larry, that was my thought, just...
So our review is fairly short and sweet? Yes. That's a fairly positive motion for you, Larry.
May I clarify, the motion is to accept for information.
I think that's what he meant, but I'm not going to put words in his mouth.
Sorry, I thought it said request for decision.
Yeah, but we can make any motion. We don't have to do it admin tells us to.
So the motion is to receive for information?
And leave the food trucks alone, yeah.
Does anybody have any questions or concerns about that?
I myself, when I read for Tabor, Lethbridge, and Calgary, how do you get a development permit for a truck? That, I'm still going to have to think about that one. Put a business license in.
Who should have a hefty business license? Make some money.
Well... They're seizing a little bit of that much money. If anything, they're more of a service right now than anything else.
Are you done yet?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed, is carried. Okay, we can get Chris back in the room now.
Oh. Can I come back? No, I wasn't listening. Can I come back? No, I wasn't listening.
So correspondence, we have correspondence from Quentin Randall regarding PEP, and we could have up to two people on there. But in the past, we've only had one, and I believe.
But you only get one vote, so what? What's the big deal?
I'm not gonna go there, Jim.
Okay, don't.
I read that, and I didn't put anybody else on it.
Okay.
Like, it doesn't make sense to me either that two people drive there, so one guy can raise their hand, like, the other one hold him, like.
This has got somebody to go for lunch with.
Maybe they have to join hands and.
What I know of PEP is they do give you lunch, because a lot of southeast mayor's meetings are right after PEP, so we join. We don't have a motion.
Okay, I'll make the motion we receive for information.
Thank you.
Would you like an alternate on the PEP board, sir?
Well, I didn't put one, I didn't put an alternate on there. Because I think if if Matt can't make it, I guess if he knew far enough out, but when it comes to being in the know, I think that's a struggle too. You know, you'd just be sending a worn body that way.
It's all good to eat.
Yeah. I don't know. So I didn't do that either when it came to the organizational meeting, and then we'd have to go back. My gosh. This is hard. Anyway. Kathy moved it for information. Does anybody else have anything to say? Chris?
If we did an alternate, at least the alternate could give Matt an update on anything that went on during that meeting, so he stays up to date.
Okay.
Not that you're right, the alternate would have much knowledge and know-how of what's going on.
Okay.
You can always appoint an alternate the next organizational meeting.
I think I can attend any meetings, right, as mayor?
Yes.
Yes, sir, your ex-officio.
An alternate if Matt can't make it. But I I I don't see the sense either in having two people with one vote.
Right, yeah, I just don't make sense.
Well, what if they disagree?
And they're gonna go outside and slug it up.
Our patronism.
Okay, so that's, that's, I think, the easiest way to handle this for now. And see, I mean, Matt can find out if if something really is changing there. Okay, any other questions or concerns? All in favor for information. Opposed, that is carried. And other, we have project updates for information. James? And I think we just went through that on the weekend too, so everybody should be familiar with all of these. So does anybody have any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, that is carried. And then the AUMA twenty twenty-one convention resolutions for information.
Receive for information.
Kathy?
And I would just comment, I don't know if anybody read any of these.
I read them all.
So did I. Uh, the emergency ambulance dispatch. I don't know if you're aware, but we actually had an incident over the weekend. A gentleman was having a heart attack, go to Subfield, and the ETA of the ambulance was forty-five minutes. So luckily, Subfield, they're professional firefighters. They basically kept him with us until the ambulance got there. I don't find that very impressive.
I think, um, the gist of this letter is, uh, or this resolution is those were the last four that Alberta Health Services took over. Fort, there was Fort McMurray, Lethbridge, Cap Red Deer, and 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 of course, so they're upset that they're losing their services, but I mean, Medicine Hat lost their services, I think, in about, what, twenty-ten, twenty-eleven? AHS took over the ambulance service from the city. And and I know that that was the talk here. We talked exactly the same thing, that it was going to be horrible, it was gonna be a mess, it was gonna be this, that, and the other thing, and and there may have been, uh, a few issues and glitches along the way, but honestly, anymore, I think what has driven some of our shortages of ambulance service, especially in the last month or two, and they've even put it out in social media that there isn't even ambulances available, is this COVID thing. And because it, for years, it actually has functioned. And and yes, there have been times where lately, there's nobody.
Forty-five minutes, it's a thirty-minute drive, and they're not allowed to speed.
Well, they do though. But but still, I I, there have been afternoons and stuff where I've seen, whether it's true or not, that there is no ambulances available, period.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They advertise.
And.
I I apologize, your worship. I had the wrong resolution. It's actually the last resolution. Uh, the emergent one. Ambulance service delivery. So I was, I said the wrong one. It was actually the last one. Which is actually where the, uh, lack of ambulances and downloading it to the the fire departments and it does speak to staffing issues and COVID.
Right. But I still think this one was, uh, same thing. It 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 hinged on the most recent takeovers. I don't know if, I don't know how much you can fight the province.
I don't know either. I don't think you can. We can tell them they're
I mean, there's some in here.
But they don't listen.
There was some in here about the policing. Again, I I don't know how much you can fight the province. If you don't say something, I'm I'm not, you know, if you don't say something, then things are gonna happen and down the road there's, you can't get it back, but. Um, I think what I would add, for the new people, that years ago, we, there would be seventy-five, eighty resolutions, and we would actually go through them through them as a council. So if we were at the convention, we would be voting in.
As a unit.
At a u- at as a unit, but um, we did quit doing that, and everybody does get to vote their way while you're there. Um. I think a trend has been in the past, very few of these resolutions ever get turned down. AUMA, they seem to all go to AUMA to lobby the province and and I guess on a personal level, I struggled with some of them because usually they're, they're all asking the province to do something or fund more, like the cleaning up of the brownfields and all that. Well, you know, that, great, all the citizens of Alberta can help Calmore with their economic development. Well, everybody needs economic development, so if you get the province helping one town, then you, are they gonna help them all and and I look at that as, you know, we see the same thing sometimes from our residents. They all want more, but they don't wanna pay more. It, they're just a higher level than us. It's not like they have more money or more means because there is only one taxpayer. But, yeah, I have no idea how this will go in Edmonton this year. It's worth a read. See what you think. Okay, Kathy moved it for information. Does anybody else have anything? Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, that is carried. And a meeting with municipal affairs doesn't like us.
Yeah, for information.
Kathy?
Be scared of this.
If you have questions or concerns, I don't think they matter. So all in favor. Opposed, that is carried. And the QR code verifier application.
Move for information.
Who did that? Chris?
I did, yeah.
So. So do we need that anywhere? Cuz we're not doing any verifications.
No, only the arena and the user groups would would be required, and you don't have to purchase the app, and it's a super easy download, and and I have downloaded it, and I just haven't tested it.
Cuz you can put it on your phone or your iPad or whatever, and and then it'll verify people's. Yeah, for us, it's only important if we're actually doing the reading.
The one thing that that is, is that you do have to have, um, other ID with that. So whether your driver's license, um, something with your name and your birth date, so your healthcare number, anything, so you can give them both.
Not much different than the card.
Yes, sir.
Uh, speaking of the arena, Phyllis, I know it's slightly off topic, but did, uh, Redcliffe Minor Hockey reach out to you about uh, them patrolling COVID checks?
So I have had some some discussions and, uh, with them. So we had four choices. I felt I had four choices when it came to to the rep program. We could either close the arena, which would make nobody happy. We could put in the rep program and operated ourselves, but then I would be in council asking for money to, for that, and I didn't think that would fly. We could do a one-third capacity, in which case I still had to man the door to make sure that we were at one-third capacity, and I would be in council asking for money. Or we could ask the user groups to do it and and maintain the program. And so that's what I chose. It didn't cost our ta- doesn't cost our taxpayers any further dollars. Um, yeah, it's not a perfect solution, but I think it's the best for our town. We did have an anonymous complaint to AHS about the user groups using it and doing the program that way. And because we are monitoring and checking in with our user groups, the case has been closed. Satisfactorily closed that we are doing our due diligence.
Yeah, I talked to a couple of people, a couple of parents from Redcliffe Minor Hockey, and they were kinda disheartened that somebody made a complaint about them. Apparently, some people made it through the door. I don't know if they came in a back door, if they just turned a blind eye for a friend. Um, but, yeah, they were hoping the town would take it over, and I said, well, that that means we gotta dip into tax dollars, but I said, maybe you wanna reach out to the provincial government. They have the two thousand dollar grant that would probably apply to them to, uh, help pay some wages to get a professional company at the door if they really wanted to. But I directed them towards you. I didn't know if they got ahold of you yet or not.
No, they just are talking to counselors.
Okay.
I think the one email that I got, Chris, was a parent that wasn't happy that we were doing the restricted program because they sent a bunch of information from other places that they found that weren't doing the restricted program, but. That's one I forwarded to Phyllis, and Phyllis answered her, that we just picked. Admin picked that one, that method. And the hope is that the arena can stay open and the kids can still play. And there's no town staff getting yelled or screamed at, and the hope was if each group was ma- managing their own kids and parents, that they should be friendly with each other and they should all know each other, so you would think that would cut down on the harassment. Apparently, maybe it doesn't. I don't know. It is too bad.
Some people are only happy when they're making people unhappy.
Yeah.
Yes.
That that sums it up.
Okay. Well, that was way off topic, so thanks for bringing that up, Chris.
Hey, my pleasure.
All right.
I do have a question about the QR code.
Okay, let's get back on.
I said, I'm not sure, but, um, I know when the province announced the QR code, I was reading a lot on social media about comments and stuff like that. Um, like waitresses and stuff, they're gonna have a problem with using it on the phone to scan these QR codes. So I think, I'm not, I just kinda wanna stay ahead of the ball here. Could that be an issue with, let's say, parents or or people that are associated with these groups, when we have to use these QR codes? Well, I don't wanna use my phone to do this, and I'm just trying to just kinda stay out of it here.
And and I I totally agree, and I even heard that from some people, that they're not gonna use their phone. Well, I don't think, if they don't wanna use their phone, then please don't take that chair where you're going to be the scrutineer. Uh, because like I say, you can't have, you know, an iPhone or anything that can scan, anything that can take a picture of the QR code will work. And I guess an organization should be able to have one of those in their list of amenities, so. And when it comes to a restaurant, I think if they had somebody at the door scanning everybody, then that would eliminate each and every waitress having to do it. Because I, by the, that time, you're already in there sitting down, so that's a little bit late. I I, like I say, I don't know. I don't know how the government rules are. I'm not involved in that. I'm not involved in the policing of it, but.
No, I just, I suggested, just in case, you know, when that time does come, you might run into that issue.
Yeah, and I really don't know. I don't think it burns your phone out. Right? It, cuz you go to a restaurant, you scan QR codes to get the menu, right, and it doesn't hurt your phone. Anyway, yeah, it's, and you're not supposed to be saving it, so that should make it easy too. It's it's just deleted and gone.
My chair has got lots of money, you know, to send out.
Yeah, I don't know. I can hardly wait. Anyway.
If we bought one of those readers, it'd likely last about one day and it'd be lost or something would happen to it.
Yeah, I don't know if there's a dedicated reader. There probably is. No, it's just iPads and iPhones?
I think they would have one like at at Costco when they're checking in your groceries.
Yeah, I don't know. Okay. Anyway, somebody will invent one, and then they'll make a million. Chris made the motion that we receive for information. All in favor. Opposed, that is carried. And then emergen- emergency management training for elected officials for information. James? That'll just be a date set up in the future.
It's online, so whenever.
Oh, you just do it at your leisure?
Yeah.
Cool. Anybody have any questions then?
So that's only required for the new counselors?
Well, it suggests in there that old counselors might need a refresher.
Right. I don't remember taking this last time.
Then you're disqualified.
Okay.
This is a twenty eighteen rule, Chris.
Say that again, Phyllis?
It's a twenty eighteen rule.
Oh, so it was a year after the last election. I remember taking it and being very bored, but that's all I remember.
Yeah. Well, I think it's suggested that everybody could take it as a refresher, so if you don't think you had it, then.
I don't, I don't think I did.
There you go. Something to do. All right.
When you've got nothing to do.
Yes.
I'll probably not do it tonight.
Okay. All right. No more questions or concerns. All in favor, receiving for information. Opposed, that is carried. And the AUMA convention schedule for information. Matt, Matthew, whatever you wanna be called. What do you wanna be called?
Whatever you.
Well, no.
If I'm in trouble, then Matthew.
Anybody have any questions or concerns?
I was just wondering, it's got the host city reception on here. Normally, in the past, we haven't gone because it's a lot of money.
I think Erica booked it.
But it usually is twenty-five or thirty bucks a piece, right?
I don't think it was. I think it was like ten or fifteen this year.
Cuz normally, you're right, we don't go to it.
Yeah. You paid that much money to go and get a.
Well, with COVID, I can't imagine what you'll get.
Yeah. Never thought of that. Maybe that's why it's a reception, but without food or alcohol.
Uh, no, I believe there's everything there, but we don't have the booklet. We don't know a lot yet. Um, but I I do know that that one Erica registered. That was included in the registration.
Yeah.
That's a first.
Well, I think if if it's already done, okay, but like, that would be something to note next year. We we usually don't go to that. And it's, cuz it usually only happens in Calgary and Edmonton. Each one hosts back and forth.
Yeah, and and I know that this was the first year that Erica had done it with COVID, and so we will make a note in in the manual that we don't. And so we will make a note in, in the manual that we don't go to the city reception.
Cause usually it's very expensive.
I, I don't think it was overly, but still.
So I think the one, the one year, was it sixty dollars? Was that in Calgary?
I, I don't know.
It was crazy.
I don't go, so I don't know. Okay. Anything else? Hopefully, they put out a agenda soon.
I hope to have packages for you all by the next council meeting.
Yeah, that'll be after the convention? No. Okay. All in favor, receiving for information, opposed, that's carried. And council, important in meetings and events, Larry. And so the budget dates will get added to these. So just.
And November's gonna be very busy.
Yeah, November's a thrill. But December comes right after, so. Any questions or concerns about any of those dates? All in favor, receiving for information, opposed, that's carried. Do we need a recess? Not. Would somebody like to move us into closed? Chris? All in favor? Opposed, that is carried.